Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Madam Recorder, would you mind leading us in the pledge? Anita.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item B, adoption of the agenda. Jesus.
Mr. Chair, no changes to the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda and allow the chair to deviate as needed.
I'll second that. Is Manny on yet? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is Supervisor Reese is going to dial in? Do we see him?
He said he was going to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, he said he was going to zoom in, however, he hasn't logged in.
He hasn't logged in yet, okay. We'll start with item C, call to the public. I have no slips in front of me. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? Nobody's rushing up to the podium. Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? You can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you hit star nine, I think, and we can let you speak. Okay. And we'll go to current events.
Mr. Chair, good morning. Good morning. I have a couple items to report. First and foremost, I attended a meeting January 25th at the city, and the Department of Housing was there, and the topics of discussion were homelessness and not having enough housing, period, and along with senior assisted living, which are critical issues here in Santa Cruz County that we need to look into. Assisted living is super, super expensive, and we sorely need assisted living, more opportunities in Santa Cruz County. Secondly, I was on conference calls for two LPC meetings on the last two Fridays. The key topic at the state right now is elections. As usual, you still have those deniers, unfortunately. And the state budgets are, I believe the Senate put out their state budget, so did the governor. They're starting to hash out budgets right now. There's nothing huge and concrete yet, but we will be in tune. And lastly, I had the honor, along with Supervisor Reese, of attending the academic decathlon on Friday at Nogales High School. We got the judge speeches, and that was wonderful. It's incredible how talented our youth are all throughout the state. There were 14 schools represented there. It was a really nice event, and that is all I have to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Hobbie, what's that background noise?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Reese is on the, I saw Zoom.
Great. Vice Chairman Reese, do you have anything to report in the current events?
Good morning. Good morning, thank you very much. I want to commend our staff, Jennifer, Jesus, Juan, Sobi, Tracy, for their actions during the blackout. They were making sure that, you know, that the generators were full of diesel so that the Sheriff's Department could have their operations, and at the county too, so that our, so that our computer system did not get overheated or shut down. So they did an outstanding job during that, and I was there for a few hours with them, and I think they did an exceptional job, and I think, you know, it was a great training opportunity, and so hopefully we can learn from it and move forward. That's all I have to report at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The last two weeks for me have been meeting with constituents about road issues. So we're having issues on Blue Haven Road. Apparently it's a dirt road that's getting used a lot by bird watchers, cyclists, ATVs, and the residents that need to move back and forth, including the people that are visiting the bird sanctuary. So I've talked to Public Works about that. Upper Elgin, and Upper Elgin Road, and also SR 83, received an unusual amount of traffic this fall because of the container wall that was going in. There were a lot of heavy trucks that were moving back and forth on it, and so the road conditions are a little rough right now. And I also received a call this morning about Papago Springs Road. It's probably the only portion of Papago Springs that we haven't chip sealed, so working with Public Works on that. I was also able to attend the meeting with the, the final meeting with the nonprofits that received the county ARPA grant. They were all pretty grateful. What they were able to get out of that was, at this point, their bylaws are now all in order, and they understand the mechanics of receiving federal grants, and so that was in part, part of what our strategy was. So we're hoping that in the future they'll move forward, applying for federal grants to support their organizations now that they understand what the process is, and that we've coached them through all the, through all the things that they need to meet. And, let's see here. And then finally, the three supervisors, after our last meeting, went to County Supervisors' Association meeting, and that was a legislative meeting. So at the beginning of the legislative session, County Supervisors' Association hosts an event where the legislators can come over, and we have a chance to talk with them. So I appreciate that Adrian Fuentes was there, but also that our state legislators were also there, so. Other than that, I also want to commend all the emergency services, and I know it was in the city, but I'm sure the sheriffs were doing the same thing during the blackout. It was a very unfortunate event. It was an extremely long event for our community. I think that we're reaching out to Unisource so that they can come in and explain to us what happened and what steps they're taking so that doesn't happen again, and not only they're going to have to do that with us, I'm sure they're going to have to do that with the Arizona Corporation Commission as well. When you have an 11-hour event, it's pretty significant, and you basically took out their entire service area in Santa Cruz County. The only people in Santa Cruz County who had power are the people that were served by Sulfur Springs Electric out in the Sonora, Elgin area, and that's what I have.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add one item. I want to send out our condolences to the Pimienta family. Angie Pimienta works for us, her dad passed last week. Our condolences and thoughts and prayers go out to her.
Thank you very much, I didn't know that. Okay. Jesus, do you have anything to add? Okay. Item E, department reports and activities, finance, cash, investment, and expenditures and revenues. Myra, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Hi Supervisor Malera. The overall balance for the general fund today is $19,925,546.51, of which $14,464,218 are invested. The overall balance for the road fund is $913,487, of which $7,093 are invested. The overall balance for the flood control is $1,178,727, of which $268,762 are invested. The overall balance for the jail district is $3,469,408, of which $1,019,194 are invested. The overall balance for all funds is $46,787,086, of which $17,605,375 are invested, and the estimated end of month balance was $15,169,315, and that's for a difference of $1.2 million more than we had last year. Do you have any questions?
Supervisor Malera, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Supervisor Reese, do you have any questions?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Myra, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to recess general session and move into flood control.
I'll second that.
Second.
Oh, Supervisor Reese will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
We are in flood control. Jesus, you going to give us a director's report?
There's two, I think you have a copy of our report. There's two items that just want to give you guys more information on. So we're working Arizona Department of Emergency Management for the, for the grant that we got from resilient communities and for a grant through FEMA. We think that we're going to be able to go off for an RFQ, request for qualification for an engineer at the end of the month. We're working through some of the scope, the changes on the scope of work, and we should have that done by then. Just to remind you guys, the grant was for $10 million.
Wow.
Through, and just recently, we received another $2 million from Senator Kelly's appropriation that occurred last year. So right now we have a running total of about $12 million. The grant is good for, the expectation of the grant is that we complete the project in five years, so, so I think we're still on schedule.
Perfect.
That's great. Hope we can design an $11 million solution so we have room for overruns.
I agree. The second project that I want to bring to your attention or provide more information is on the Nogales downtown remapping study. The remapping study is, we have a path moving forward. It looks like we're going to be able to remove the floodway from downtown Nogales, and also, you know, through, through the, through the modeling that we've done in Sonora, in Nogales and Sonora, we, we reduced the peak discharge by about 25%. It went from 9,500, it went from 13,500 to 9,500, so that's all positive. There's going to be some reduction in the floodplain, so the boundary gets a little smaller, so. We get that approved, and since we have a path moving forward, you know, right now the, the mapping stops at the end of the tunnels, and once that's approved, we're going to systematically work our way down until we're able to apply the techniques that are being accepted by FEMA now.
So that means that downtown can be improved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great news, great news.
It's good news, I agree.
How many areas in the county have you studied and been able to change the flood designation on?
We looked, what has been completed has been about five areas in the county where we have remapped the floodplain. We did the hydrology and the hydraulics, and some, two, three of them are in Rio Rico, one of them is sitting in Nogales, and then the one we're working on. What's pending now is Kino, I'm sorry, Kino Springs also got completed. So probably a total of seven areas where we looked at it, and there's been a significant change in the flood mapping, and actually people came out of the floodplain. We've used a combination of just remapping with, with the new techniques, and also done a couple projects where we did retained detention basins.
That's great. And are there more areas that we're considering to do this with, or?
Mr. Chair, that's the main mission of, of the flood control district, where we're looking at areas where we can improve, and I know that we could apply the same techniques and reduce the flood mapping, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the audience for the flood control? Supervisor Reese, do you have any questions?
Just quickly, I'm glad that we're moving forward to finally finish the mapping of the downtown area. The other thing too is I know that Jesus has been meeting with the city to try to address some of the issues there at the Wash in front of the Public Works building in Ho-Hokum. For those of you that drive there, you can see that the road is pretty close to being scoured and failing if we don't do anything so. I know Jesus and Juan have been working to try to get a solution to that, so I want to commend them for that. And that concludes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor, Vice Chairman. Jesus, I do have one more question. The, the work that's being done in Sonora Creek, is that involved any flood control money? The all-weather crossing at Sonora on Pendleton?
It does not. It does not.
So that's all state money, the grant that we got from ADOT, ARPA money, and some CEGO money?
Correct.
Okay, no flood control. Thank you. Okay, do we have a monthly report from the city in Nogales?
We did not receive one.
Okay. Is anybody online from the town of Patagonia? I see Ron's on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have just a small, short report. The town of Patagonia has met with County Manager St. John, Public Works Director Jesus Fabdez, introducing our new town engineer, Bill O'Brien. We also met with the subcontractor, Rob Lane, and South 32 in regards to the future of the Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project. Very good meeting. We all are on the same page, I believe. I think we're getting our financing straightened out. So that pretty much concludes our update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us on Zoom. And now I asked for public comment before, but I will ask for public comment again. Okay, nobody rushing up to the podium. We have item five, discussion possible action to approve variance for floodplain use permit number 22-121, located at 248 West Elm Street in Nogales, Arizona. Good morning, Leonard.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We had a request from a local residence on behalf, on their, from their engineer for a variance to a floodplain use permit for installation of a new electric service panel. Jesus alluded to the previous mapping of downtown Nogales. It was very conservative, and it would require that the new service panel be, be sited at an elevation that was unacceptable to the local utility company. We looked at the new mapping. This area is going to be outside of the floodplain now, so based on that new study, we're asking for a fair, a variance to the floodplain use permit.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn flood control and move back into general session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Action item H1, discussion possible action to approve vacancies for Planning and Zoning Commission. A, reappoint Nancy Pottinger for District 1 from Chairman Reese and Vice Chairman Reese. I keep giving you promotion, Manny. And B, appointment of Michael M. Sane for District 2 from Supervisor Malera.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. Or second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Under discussion, I just want to mention that Michael is a former student of mine, and is an up-and-coming leader in the community, and I'm super proud of him and honored to nominate him and appoint him.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just to thank Ms. Pottinger for continuing to wanting to serve on the committee on the planning and zoning.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 2, discussion possible action to reapprove the reappointment of Gene Miller as Board of Adjustment member for District 3. By me. I move that we reappoint Gene Miller.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'd like to thank Gene also for serving on these boards. It takes a lot of time, personal free time to do this, there's a lot of reading, and just appreciate the commitment to the community. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item 3, discussion possible action to approve reappointment of the Santa Cruz County Local Workforce Development Board members for two-year terms, Louis Doyle, Dan Doyle, Tom McAlpin, and Karen King, and for three-year terms, Gina Sanchez and Olivia Kramer.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4, discussion possible action to approve the appointment of precinct committee persons for Santa Cruz County Republican Party. Says secured voter, Sonora 15.
Move to approve.
Who's secured voter?
Second.
Adam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a secured voter is a protected voter by court order, and we cannot disclose their information, and that's why we labeled it as a secured voter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Learned something new.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 5, discussion possible action for authorization to fill vacancies, A through F.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Are all these positions budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, motion carries. Item 6, discussion possible action for authorization to create and fill. A, office specialist position in the school superintendent's office to satisfy the ESAR grant. B, legal assistant position in the county attorney's office to satisfy the diversion grant. And C, an IT media specialist position.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Are these budgeted items? The two grant-funded, and then the IT? Good morning, Juan.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor. Yeah, the IT media specialist will be housed in the IT department but paid under WIOA's grant.
As a grant-funded position.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 7, discussion possible action for authorization to reclassify and fill environmental health supervisor position to environmental specialist, 3, lead in environmental health department.
Move to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
Item 8, discussion possible action to approve contract amendment with Mariposa Community Health Center for Health Resources and Services Administration Rural Counties opioid response program in the amount of $20,000 from the sheriff.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 9, discussion possible action to approve contract with Mariposa Community Health Center for the Health Resources and Services Administration Rural Counties opioid resistance program in the amount of $25,000 from Justice of the Peace.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, discussion possible action to approve proclamation designating February 2023 as Early Childhood Education Awareness Month from the county school superintendent. Is there anybody from the county school superintendent's office that'd like to speak? It's okay, you just jump over John.
So move to approve, Mr. Chairman, as they come to the podium.
Oh.
Second.
And under discussion. Thank you Supervisor.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Supervisors, good morning community. This is the seventh annual year that we have held this, and what this is, is our office together with a lot of people that you see here, a lot of organizations, which you hear in the, or you see in the proclamation. The goal of the month is to raise awareness for the importance of early childhood education. You'll see the stats for our, for our county, we're considered a childcare desert, which means we don't have enough spots for our young children to go to preschool and, and be taken care of while their parents work. And early childhood education is extremely important because 90% of a child's brain is developed by the time they're five. So it's something that we want to bring the attention to the community, to our leaders in the efforts that we're able to find more support, financial support, to provide more daycares and childcare centers for our local young children. And I want to thank everybody that's here today. See people from different organizations, Mariposa First Things First, Starlo's Brothers Program, also Child and Family Resources, and everybody else that's on our childhood committee. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you for what you do. We really appreciate it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, discussion possible action to approve amendments to the Arizona Department of Health Services intergovernmental agreements extending the ending date from February 28, 2023 to May 31, 2024, for A, Contract CTR 058658 for COVID-19 contract tracing, and B, Contract Number CTR 058663 for enhanced and sustained testing for COVID-19.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 12, discussion possible action to approve agreements with Sentinel Technologies for A, Master Services Agreement Addendum Contract SCS 3662, B, Office 365 Migration Services Agreement for Email Migration Services in the amount of $18,333, and C, Data Service, Data Center Servicers, Data Center Servers, and Storage Refreshment Agreement in the amount of $301,945.79 cents.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Juan, you want to talk about this a little bit? Since you're in the room, we'll make use of your expertise.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, thank you. Yeah, so the, the first one is just an amendment to our master agreement that we have with them to include some of the items that legal wanted on there. And then the other one, so I guess we're migrating over to Office 365, so Sentinel's going to help us with that migration, so we'll, pretty soon here be in contact with everybody throughout the organization to, to let them know that, and we'll work through that. And then the last one is, our data center is reaching end of life, so we're just trying to get ahead of that. And that item is under a lease agreement that Mauricio set up, so that has been already kind of been budgeted for.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 13, discussion possible action to approve Amendment Number 1 to Arizona Department of Transportation. ADOT Aeronautics Group Grant Agreements, A, Grant Number E3S2G01C for new guidance and signage to a maximum of $150,000, and B, Grant Number E3S2H01C for new taxiway lighting MITL to a maximum of $500,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And under discussion. Mary, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely, I echo those comments.
All righty. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, discussion possible action to approve request for proposal number B-02-23-CO10 for the Southern Arizona Cuisine Tourism Initiative Market Study and Winery District Master Plan and Land Use Overlay District.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion possible action to approve memorandum of understanding with the Department of Public Safety regarding Border Strike Task Force from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 in amount of $166,666.68.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion possible action to approve legal services contract commencing January 19, 2023 with Jones, Skelton, and Hushy, JSH, to provide limited legal representation for two employees regarding CR 22-824-TUC-RCC-LAV.
Move to approve.
Second, and what is this about, please? Legal can just give us an update?
William, thank you very much.
Hello?
William is taking the podium.
So, two of our county employees were asked to be grand jury witnesses, and we suggest outside counsel just to prevent any possibility of a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I got it, thanks. That's all I need. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen, discussion possible action, recommendation of approval for applications for remote tasting room for Flying Leap Vineyard. Madam Clerk, is everything in order?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, everything is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Remote.
A remote tasting room. So, they are opening a tasting room in Tubac.
Oh, okay.
From their vineyards in Sonoyta. So, I'd like to thank them for their patience and working diligently with our community development department to make that happen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eighteen, discussion possible action on the recommendation of approval/disapproval of the application for a special event license for the Tubac Rotary Club for 4/23/23.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I believe this is for their Taste of Tubac event that they hold at the Tubac Golf Resort, their main fundraiser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nineteen, discussion possible action to approve bonds for duplicate warrant dated 10/7/22 payable to Nationwide Retirement Solutions, A through E.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty, tax valuation adjustments, A through P.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-one, approval of minutes, 1/17/23 and 3/30/22, study session.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-two, demands. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $1,530,812.10, of which $436,611.21 are from the general fund.
I will second that.
Second.
Oh, you're back. So, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-three, is discussion possible action to approve funding for the courts to retain outside counsel to provide legal advice regarding the court's intended transition to an independent personnel system? This is an item that we cannot take action on today because we don't have legal counsel, but Judge Fink wanted to make a presentation. So, Judge Fink, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. Good morning, Supervisor Malera, and good morning Supervisor Ruiz. Before I make this presentation, I want to echo a comment that was made earlier about the power outage. I live in the eastern part of the county, so I was not aware, fortunately, that the power was out here. But, beginning at about 5:00 in the morning or so, we had excellent communication and coordination from the county manager and your staff. And that was very important because we have two separate buildings and two separate staffs, and it's important that we coordinate. So, we don't let people stay home while you're telling people to come in, or vice versa. But, there really was tremendous communication and coordination from, right from the beginning. And it showed because we really worked together well. So, I'm much, I'm very obliged and appreciative of that. This is an item that I requested be put on the agenda. I'm grateful that it was. As you know, we've discussed before, I'm not going to go into any detail, but the courts are seeking to transition away so that we have our own court personnel system. And we provided a working document draft of a memorandum of understanding to the county in late December that we hope to engage in discussions with, about, with county staff and management to try to come to a mutual understanding and agreement about the ways we can go forward with mutual cooperation. This is a request for authorization for funding so that we can hire outside private counsel. And let me say, it's my, it was my hope that we would never have to do this. And my hope was that when we provided a working draft of the memorandum of understanding that we could meet, I designated a team of staff from leadership, from our court of three persons, and one outside person, to just engage in a discussion with county administration and hope that we would be able to come to an agreement about moving forward based upon this memorandum of understanding as to the delineation of who is going to do what and who is responsible for what. And, but, when I was here at the last meeting at the Call to the Public and I raised this issue, then Supervisor Ruiz mentioned that the matter was not able to be addressed because they were waiting for, you were waiting for legal advice from outside counsel, who is Mr. Andrew Peterson. And by the way, I commend you. He's an excellent lawyer, and it'll be a pleasure working with him. But, when that happened, now that you've retained outside counsel to advise you, that changed the dynamic of what we had to do. Again, I was hoping we could just, between the court, our court leadership and your leadership, look at this draft document and have a discussion and come to a mutual agreement about it. I don't think it's a very controversial document. And that lawyers wouldn't have to get involved. And no one knows better than a judge what happens when lawyers get involved, and things get a lot, unfortunately, a lot more complicated and a lot more difficult and cumbersome. And it elevates things from basically trying to work things out on a staff level and a leadership level to a legal level with the possibility of litigation in the future. And so, that changed things. So, the fact that you have retained outside counsel and, as we say in the parlance of the legal field, you've lawyered up. So, we have to do the same. And we need, you know, we've got, we've got three lawyers on our staff. We're all judges, but we can't practice law, and we can't represent us. And we are the party, and I am the representative of the party of the court as the presiding judge. So, that escalated things. It's okay, but it's really not what I wanted to have happen, as I mentioned, but it escalated things. And so, we need outside legal advice, just the way you do. And we need someone to represent us if it goes to a lawyer-to-lawyer level. And I know today that you just, a few minutes ago, outside, approved outside legal counsel for two employees who have to appear, unfortunately, before a grand jury so that they can have outside legal advice, and the court's asking for the same. And we have to have it. We need advice, we need legal advice. I can't do it. I can't practice law. I'm a judge, neither can other two judges who are lawyers. They can't do it. I regret that it came to this, and that taxpayers are going to have to spend money for outside legal advice for yourselves and for the court. I don't like spending taxpayers' money when it's not needed, but unfortunately, this puts us in a position where we have to do that. So, I understand you need to go into executive session, and it was communicated to me by Jesus Valdez, and I appreciate the call this morning that you could not take action on the item this morning. So be it. Go into executive session when your legal counsel is available. But, we need this funding so that we can have what you have. And actually, we're in a worse position than you are because you have, I think, two or three deputy county attorneys who are civil attorneys, and of course, Mr. Silva himself has advised the board before. You have three or four attorneys who are your attorneys. We have none. So, I think it's a very fair and reasonable request that you approve funding for the court. Requested an initial amount of $25,000. Whenever you hire lawyers, I'm sure you're aware, you just don't know what it's going to end up costing, and hopefully, it will cost very little. But, it's going to depend, you know, on what you folks decide to do. It's going to, what we end up having to spend and how much counsel we need will depend in part upon what you do. So, that being said, I know you can't make a decision today, but those are the reasons why I made this request. I'll also note that we've done the research. It's very clear, there's case law. Then in a situation like this, the court is entitled to outside counsel, and that funding has to come from the funding source, which is the county. I'm willing to give your, this might even save you a little money if you're willing to accept it. I've done the research. I'm willing to give it to your, to your outside counsel. I've got the case law from Arizona Case Law. Of course, he'll want to do his own research, but it's a starting point, and the case law is very clear that might expedite things. So, if your, if your outside counsel wishes to see that case law, I'm happy to send it over to him so he can evaluate it himself. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know that you have open lines with me to communicate, and I'd like to see us just try and communicate and avoid spending needless money out to outside counsel. You know, I understand where you're coming from. I think a lot of departments are in the same situation. I think we need, we are in the process of evaluating our whole process here countywide. And I just want to let you know that you have open lines of communications with me, okay?
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you've always been that way. And you've always been open-minded and easy to get in to see and receptive to listening and hearing. And I will, I'll take you up on that. I appreciate that. And again, I'm with you. I, you know, like I said, this document was submitted to management in late December. You know, here we are a couple of months later almost, and we haven't had any response. But, I was hoping we could just resolve it, as said, on a leadership, using our court leadership just to have a discussion with your leadership and resolve it that way without everybody lawyering up, as I say. But, unfortunately, it's come to that. And we are entitled to the money. So, I'd encourage you to, to take all that into consideration when you meet privately in executive session. But, thank you for your offer, Chairman. Mr. Supervisor Malera.
Supervisor Reese, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and with all due respect to Judge Fink, and we've met in my office before, and the only reason we went to outside counsel, Judge, because as you issued an administrative order, in other words, telling us what we had to do. If it would have been just a simple memorandum of understanding, as you stated up there, things could have been different. That's number one. You know, it's frustrating that it comes for us to having to spend taxpayer dollars on some of these things. And we're in a flux of transition. We lost our HR director. We're going to have to find another one. And from what I understand from her is that you were not very pleasant or listening to her, or even the way that our manager has been treated. And this comes directly from them, and not to stir a confrontation or anything, Judge. And that's the reason that we decided to get an outside counsel is when you issued that administrative order. If it would have come like, Jennifer, can you please review this memo of understanding and see how we can work together to try to resolve it on a leadership, would have been totally different. But, you have that opportunity, Judge, to issue those orders that we, as a county, unless we find a way not to have to comply. And that's the only reason we're in this pickle. And so, you know, for the sense, for the sake of transparency, is we need to call it what it is. And if it wasn't that way, we wouldn't be here, and who knows what could have occurred a few months ago. And so, with all due respect, Judge, I think, you know, there's a very distinct difference between a memorandum of understanding and administrative order issued by that presiding just judge of the Superior Court. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Reese.
May I say something? Yeah, well, if you want to set the record straight, here's the straight record. I did try. I've been trying for weeks and months to work through county management to open a discussion, to informally resolve this without any orders of any kind. The administrative order, which I believe you're referring to, did not order you to do anything except to direct your staff to engage in the discussions on the memorandum of understanding. It was a request through an order to order your staff to engage in the discussions and the negotiations, which I had been trying to do, which you said you'd like to do. So, I was trying to get done what you have just said you liked to have done, which should have informal discussions, negotiations without any orders of any kind. And that didn't happen. So, that order resulted from the fact that I couldn't get any response from your county management to doing this on a less formal basis. The only part of that order that directed anything was just a request for you to direct your staff to engage in negotiations, and that's it. So, and I've got plenty of communications and emails and messages and notes of exactly how all this played out. So, thank you for your comments, but with all due respect, those are the facts.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, John.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. I thought, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
So, we're in the, just for everybody to understand what's happening right now. The county started a class and comp study a couple of months ago. And a class and comp study is, we hire a firm to look at every department and every person who works in those departments and compares those with outside entities that are similar size of us and also some of the larger ones. So, we can get a better understanding of where we are salary-wise compared to what's happening. There was two reasons why we ordered that. One, it's been a little while, it's been a while since we've done it. And two, because what's gone on with the pandemic and salaries in the last year and a half have really affected county government instrumentally. And when we talk to our other supervisors, they're all facing the same issues that we're facing, where there's, you know, we're having trouble attracting talent, and the talent that we do have is tempted to leave because of compensation. That's why you order a class and comp study. Also gives you a better basis of what's happening around you. We did express to Judge Fink, when all this happened in January, the end of December, beginning of January, we are in a transition. We are transitioning from one county manager to another, and in January, our HR director gave us notice that she was leaving. So, we're in the transition in HR, and we're in transition of manager. So, when you ordered us to start negotiation, we don't even know who we're going to appoint to negotiate with you. So, we asked you for some time to come to a resolution on who we're moving forward with as a county manager and to get an HR director in here to get these things going. And so, that's where, from my perspective and watching all this play out, that's where we are. As soon as we have these things in place, we'll be happy to start having these conversations.
Just to be clear again, the memorandum of understanding has nothing to do with salaries. It doesn't affect salaries in any way. It just provides the court with the opportunity to make, have certain control over HR functions and personnel functions, such as writing our own job descriptions and having at least a part-time HR person of our own. And it sets out things like, you know, it just sets out what the laws, the county still has to provide health insurance and retirement and maintain certain records that you're required to do under law, and it sets out what our responsibilities are. It has nothing to do with salaries. It's just a division of authority so that the court can have some separate, independent control as an independent branch of government over its personnel functions. And that's all it does. It has nothing to do with salaries. And so, that's a whole nother... And so that's, that's a whole nother issue for another day.
But you say it's an independent branch of government, but it's funded by the same funding sources that funds all other government. And what we try to do here as a board is we try to fund all government and salaried positions equitably.
But it has nothing to do with salary positions. I just, it doesn't, it doesn't direct you to pay anything for any salary for any other employer. It just, it has nothing to do with salaries. We just want to have more control over our personnel functions. And, and if we had had that in place, we'd probably now have a personnel director or HR director, which we don't now have, we do not now have. And that's not going to be an easy chair for you to fill. I appreciate that challenge. But this has nothing to do with salaries, just to be clear. It doesn't give us control over salaries. You're absolutely right. You're the FISC. You control the budget. The board is always, has the financial responsibility. Nothing that we're trying to do would ever change that. Just want to be clear because I understand you're going through a market study. I also want to note that we got a market study for probation employees and probation officers. And I just got that yesterday and forwarded to you yes, late yesterday afternoon. I know you haven't had a chance to look at it. I didn't expect that you would. Arizona Supreme Court did a market study for all probation employees and for probation officers and supervisors. And I gave that to you. It's, it was a document that was commissioned by the Arizona Supreme Court. And it shows that Santa Cruz County of the 15 counties in the state of Arizona, including Apache and La Paz, where they can barely keep the lights on right now, Greenly, Navajo, Graham Counties, we are last among the 15 counties in probation officer supervisors and detention officer salaries. We are last in comparison with all the other 14 counties in the state. So, and I provided that to you.
And when you see our class and comp study, you're going to find out that there's a lot of positions where we're not the highest paying or we're the second to the lowest paying or we're the lowest paying. It's just, it's the financial reality of this community. So when you come and you point to one thing and you say, look, you're last, that's, you know, where are we at overall? How are we doing financially as a county? Are we functioning as a government? Those are the things that the people elect us to do.
I understand that.
They don't elect us to be the highest paying county in every position.
Well, I'm not asking be, and there's no expectation we'd be the highest. But I didn't expect us to be last behind La Paz County or Apache or Navajo, where, you know, many of those people live for free. So, I mean, those are not affluent places, Chairman Bracker. But that's a discussion for another day. I just wanted to clarify for the record that this has nothing to do with trying to get, directing you or ordering you to pay more. I mean, if that's a discussion, it's a discussion for a later date. It's a separation, delineation of responsibilities so that we can operate somewhat independently and autonomously as to some aspects of our human resources function. I'm not going to respond to Chairman, I'm not going to get down with Chairman Ruiz and talk about my relationship with your other, with your other staff members. I mean, I, I respect that.
Judge, so when you look at what this board has done in the last four years with salaries and compensation and giving raises and setting up a plan where people can understand where their next raise is going to come from, not including what's happening with the economy, which we had to deal with last year, we've made a lot of progress. Are we where we want to be? No. But when you start pointing out things to us that were, you're last here and you're last there, it's not doing anybody any favors, Judge.
It's not doing us any favors, it's not doing us any favors to be last because we can't, we, last time we had a probation officer opening, we had two applicants. We usually get five, six, seven, eight, and nine applicants. We have people who are eligible to retire from probation officers who are going to retire. You can't fill positions. So these are really important discussions. I really don't think today's the day and time and place. I hadn't intended to do that. But these are, we've got a problem. And you've, we've all got a problem. These are people who carry guns. They're licensed security firearms. You know, they're quasi law enforcement officers. We can't fill positions. We're not even getting applicants.
Right. And Judge, when what you're asking to do is you're asking to prioritize the court system over everybody else in the county.
Well, everybody else can fight their own battles. I'm not here to fight their battles. And, and I'm not going to, I've had discussions with other elected officials, but they can fight their own battles or not. They make their own decisions. But I got a court to run. And, and we are an independent branch of government, so that puts us in a different category. It really does. It's, it puts us in a different position. But I'm not, you know, they, they can decide what to do or fight or not fight their own battles. I'm not here to talk about them. But we have a court to run. We're also in operation, you know, where we can't say no. And the county attorney's office files what they file. People come into court. We're like a restaurant. You can appreciate, we can't say no. I mean, restaurants can say we're at capacity. We can't. We have to take everything that walks in the door. And we're a passive recipient of the caseload that comes to us. So we don't have the ability, as other departments do, to say, we're full or we can't do that or we can't grade that road right now. We have to grade that road. We have to hear it.
So one thing I'd like to request from you is I'd like to know how many federal cases that we're handling that the federal prosecutors are turning down. I'd like to know what the responsibility that the constituents of Santa Cruz County are carrying that should be federal cases. This is something that I've been asking for, for five years because I want to try to get reimbursement from the federal government to handle these cases. And I have not, I have not received a reply on that.
Glad to help you out with that. I, we're, I'm totally on board with you on that.
Can we get it done in the next two months?
Sure. Yep. We can give you, we can, we can look at our data and extrapolate from the data as to federal cases that the court is handling. And, and give you a figure for that.
And also as, as the presiding judge, you can also then tell me what's going on with probation and all these other officers and how many of these cases and what these costs are all the way down the line?
Can we, since I can get that to you in two months, can, can we hear from you engage in negotiations with your staff within two months? I mean, it's been two months. It's been two months.
We're in a, Judge, I, as soon as we get through our transition, we'll begin our conversation.
When do you think that'll be?
We're going off topic. Yes.
I'm responding, I'm responding what the supervisor is asking.
And I'm on the edge. So we'll, we'll back off of that. Judge, thank you very much for coming in this morning.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time, Chairman Bracker and Supervisor Ruiz and Malera. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussions? We're here, move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.